Attention, everyone. We're getting ready to begin the public hearing. Okay, my name is Dan Freo. I am the Labor Relations Attorney for the School City of Hammond. This is Lou Gekas. He is the President of the Hammond Teachers Federation. And Indiana Code 20-29-6-1 states that before the exclusive representative for the teachers here in Hammond and any corporation in the state and the school employer can begin negotiations, they have to have this public hearing. They have to have this public hearing. Now, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear any comments that people wish to express regarding teacher compensation or collective bargaining. It is not intended to be a back and forth between any of us and you. It's just to hear you make comments. Like I said, it, the meeting needs to be conducted by representative of the exclusive representative and a representative of the school employer. So with that, the only other thing I would say is that we do have a three-minute limit. However, I've, I've talked to Mr. Gekas and I've indicated to him if somebody's making a point, well, let it go past the three minutes. Allow them to finish their point that they're making. With that, I would say, do you have any comments you'd like to say?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here this afternoon, taking some time out of your schedule. I know many of you are teachers that are sitting out there right now and are exhausted from a long day of work being in front of your students. So I know that I truly appreciate your presence and support here today. As Mr. Field indicated, there is that three-minute timeframe, but if you feel the need to go over, please do so. Make your point and we trust your judgment on that as well. With that, I guess we'll, we'll call our first speaker then, Ms. Anita Cox.
Good afternoon. My name is Anita Cox. I have been a teacher for the School City of Hammond for 16 years and currently work at Hammond Central. My greatest concern going into negotiations is wondering if School City of Hammond really cares about teacher retention. I worry about this because no one asked the at least 92 teachers and counselors who resigned from School City of Hammond in the 2021-2022 school year why they quit. 92 of them. So many talented, caring, experienced, irreplaceable teachers walked away and no one tried to stop them. It breaks my heart. If I listed their names right now, it might make me cry. Another 20 retired. I don't understand how School City of Hammond is going to stop the bleed when they don't bother to ask what causes it. So will more money solve the problem? I hope so. It had better because it's one of the few things that we can bargain. School City brags on their website about double-digit pay raises for teachers, but it did not feel that way for employees when they had waited years for meaningful change in salary with inflation skyrocketing, with student debt, and with sudden changes to the insurance plan. I believe that School City of Hammond has the resources, both monetary and otherwise, to improve working conditions and make all of their employees feel valued. Giving us back COVID-sick days, not having to continually ask, "When am I going to get the money I'm owed?", and creating a fair list of stipend positions would be a start. I believe that School City of Hammond could do much more to improve working and learning conditions. The driving question is, will they in good faith use their resources to show teachers that they are valued? I hope so. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Powers.
It is my pleasure to come before you today to speak on behalf of myself and no doubt many of my colleagues. As we've been in the process of bargaining during as when it's necessary to take care of educators in School City of Hammond, there are many things that need to be addressed. While the pay increase from a year ago did begin to address the issue, helping educators in life, there's still much that needs to be done. Everyone here, from members of the board to citizens, community educators, are present. We realize that inflation cost of living has hit hard. School City of Hammond needs to continue to make sure that educators receive livable wages. While some may say, "Why should we pay educators more?", I'm here to tell you, teachers, students in the district cram a year's worth of work into these 10 months and continue to sacrifice their so-called time off with professional development and preparation for the next year during summer. We were put on the high deductible healthcare plan to save us money, but it seems more to save the school money. While that stipend was nice to add to account, there is no reason we should have to do that to ensure that we have our health needs covered for the year. An issue that I raised a year ago was never addressed. I pointed out that our current health plan does not cover certain necessities such as hearing aids that some employees, such as myself, require or re-require in the near future. One can make the argument that the stipend such will cover it, which is great, but what are we supposed to do once that money is gone? We have other health issues and that money for such things are not covered by our deductible. So, for example, with my situation, I basically have to pay $6,000 out of pocket with maximum $3,000 from the HSA and $3,000 more to cover what I need. And again, that $3,000 is not met in the deductible of the policy. So I am one medical disaster away from being unable to cover basic life bills for years The idea has been pushed for teachers to live in Hammond. How are we even able to do that? As someone who is looking to purchase a home, cost of everything is crazy. I am on a single income. How am I ever supposed to do that on the current salary? I've heard many complaints about School City of Hammond being short on teachers and staff. Look at how many people are heading to other districts or even getting out of education. It's long past, it's long past doing it for a lot of the job. We need wages to be able to support ourselves. It is ridiculous where managers in retail and such, where a degree is not even required, are making more than professionals such as ourselves. One thing that we must keep in mind is the fact that COVID, while we seem to have a better handle on it, it's still not over. The board policy that we are required to isolate for five days and use our personal sick days seems quite unfair. We do everything we can to stay safe. I've got my vaccinations booster and my second one the end of this week. I keep my distance from my students as much as possible. I was doing all this last year and I still ended up getting COVID. Can someone please explain why we are personally responsible for this? I know of many who have taken even more precautions than myself and still come down with it. If we're required to isolate, what happens when we run out of days from this and other illnesses? We're supposed to lose pay simply because we follow board policy? Surely, we can do better than this. Don't punish us for following the policy. We all want the best for the students, but we also need to ensure that we get what's best for the teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Moriarty.
Good evening. My name is Mary Moriarty and I'm a teacher at Eggers Middle School where I teach eighth grade science. Every morning, I arrive at school between 6:30 and 6:45 a.m. and I'm usually not the first, even though our school day starts at 8:05. Teachers are very committed to providing the best education for their students. If they are not arriving early, then they're staying late to get everything prepared for for their classes. Often, they get materials on their own spending, sorry, often they get materials on their own, spending hundreds and even thousands of dollars to supplement their lessons, reward students for excellent behavior and achievement. Last year, I spent over 100, I spent hundreds of dollars on my class materials. In previous years, I've spent over 1,000, if not more. Last year, middle school teachers went through a very challenging schedule change and even ended up with half our classes being new to our rooms. This year, we have faced the same thing, but with the majority of our students changed after two weeks. Our teachers are working through much adversity and trying to make the situation the best poss, best possible for our students. Even when they have 13 positions not filled, teachers continue to step up to take, take classes on during their planned time or even during class times. Teachers in our middle schools are dedicated and deserve a decent contract along with fully funded HSA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rena Horgan.
Good evening. Last night at the school board meeting, the school board voted to approve a laundry list of contracts for many different entities. Trustee Blake King was the only one to question where the funds were coming from to pay for these contracts. She was told the SRT2 money was paying for them. When she questioned further, she asked if the SRT2 money isn't there, where would the funds come from? And she was told that they come from operating budget. Before all the SRT2 money is spent on these other things, School City should be spending it on raising teachers' salaries to retain our best and our brightest teachers. We are competing with every district in the nation. Many of the, many of our best teachers have already left. We are going to keep, are we going to keep hemorrhaging and let these other districts steal our School City of Hammond employees? Districts like Chesterton, who this year just raised new teacher salaries at $53,000 starting salary and gave their veteran teachers another $3,000 raise and extra stipends. I'm urging School City of Hammond to stop spending all the SRT money on contracts and products that teachers may not need and put that money to where it surely is needed. Teachers want what students need. Schools can't become the best places for students to learn and grow unless we make them the best places for teachers to work and grow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We recognize that some of you are coming in from work right now, leaving your buildings and coming into the meeting room here. If you wish to speak, feel free to sign up in the back there. We still have some sign-in sheets, okay? And we'll collect them as we move through the meeting. Mark Webster.
Good afternoon. I'm here to speak on behalf of my students. Why is my class being taught by a sub who cannot teach the content? That's because we don't have the ability to attract and retain a full complement of highly-trained staff. I'm also here to speak on behalf of my colleagues. Why is my caseload so much larger than it should be? I have so many students that it's impossible to provide my expertise to all of them equitably. Same answer. In the state of Indiana, very few things are able to be bargained for. We can't bargain for class sizes. We can't bargain for better resources. We can't bargain for better working conditions. Distinguished company, all of your employees can legally do is petition for better salaries and insurance perks. This is the only way that we can remain competitive. I've been a loyal employee of this school district for six years. Only six. I'm already one of the senior members of my department. Our inability to retain faculty should concern all of us. If we cannot petition for a more favorable work environment, we need to increase salary expectations to ensure better retention and attract more talent. It is up to you to give us a reason to stay. Your students, employees, and constituents are owed a consistent faculty. Give them what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Clifford.
Hi, my name's Laura Clifford. I am a special education teacher at Morton High School for emotionally disability students. I'd first like to say I appreciate the raise that we got last year, but that was just merely a start. We are not making nearly enough for all that we do. And not just me, the sped department, but everybody in our, in all the buildings. But I'm going to speak here especially about our sped department. Our caseloads are huge. I'm looking at a caseload of 31 right now, ED students. I don't even get to see these kids. Some of them I don't see at all because they have an ED label they've been placed on my caseload. I don't feel that I'm an asset to that child and to be listed as their TOR. And I don't even see them or interact with them in any way. We have one resource teacher for each grade level. I know for a fact that one of our resource teachers has 51 students on his caseload. For my class, they changed how my students would earn their credits. This was not done prior to the school year starting. I held, had a meeting about it again today. My students are supposed to use Apex. They're still not on Apex. I've had no training or no access to Apex and we're, what, four weeks in now? Another issue is the insurance. I'm the insurance provider for my family. And if we wouldn't have gotten that $3,000 stipend to add to our health savings accounts, it would have destroyed my family. We live paycheck to paycheck. And if they continue with this high deductible, it's just not doable. And then, you know, a $3,000 stipend that we got that could have went towards something else, we had to put it into the health savings account so we could pay for our medical care for the year. Teachers are leaving. There, and a lot of them are leaving for less money. So even the money that Hammond is offering is not enough to keep people here. We need change.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tracy Moyers.
Good afternoon to everybody here today and thank you for holding this so we can say what we feel like we need to say. I am a 33-year veteran of the Hammond school system. And in spite of being short 13 teachers at Eggers, after being at Clark for 31 years, to come into this, it has not been easy. I mean, we gotta do something to retain these teachers. Some of my best friends are like, "Come on, come with us, come with us." Even last weekend at the football game, they're trying to get me to go with them. And my heart is here, but I don't know if it can stay here at this point. I mean, we, we need more support. I, you know, we're, we're trying to do things at Eggers. We're trying to start up the PTA that's been obsolete for a couple of years. We're, you know, trying to go out there and provide things for the kids. But when they want you to cover or you need to cover classes to both of your prep periods, I mean, we already, even before covering classes, it's like the amount of time you spend after school preparing and grading papers, it's a lot of time. And I just don't feel like we're being treated fairly here in Hammond. I got one friend of mine who has 42 people in her class almost every period. How long are our periods? 45 minutes? How do you teach 42 kids in 45 minutes? When you gotta take attendance and with 45, 42 kids, even if you have a seating chart, that's going to take a while. And then kids, "Well, this isn't, I don't have this," or "I need pencils." By the time we get all that figured out, we have no time to hardly teach. And that's, that's another issue. And I know there's a teacher shortage everywhere, but I feel like Hammond definitely needs to do more for their teachers to retain these wonderful educators that continue to leave. I just, so many of my friends have left and, and it's really sad because I see what's happening to our students. Our students aren't getting the education they deserve because the numbers are too big. We can't retain these teachers, so they're sitting in rooms without anybody. I mean, the one thing I will say I love about Eggers is the people I work with. They are great people. Great. Last year, when I started at Eggers, they were very supportive. They supported me throughout all of last year and still to this day, if nobody else like stands up for us, we're trying to support each other. But, you know, we need, we need to get people to want to come here. Give them incentives to come here. And that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha Shonig.
Randy Weingarten, President of the American Federation of Teachers, wrote several articles in the fall 2022 issue of The American Educator that I'm using as a resource for my comments tonight. I met with the elementary building representatives over the summer to hear their concerns for the 2022-23 school year. The number-one concern for teachers was feeling respected by the building level and district level administration of the School City of Hammond. So my question becomes, how does the Hammond Teachers Federation negotiate working conditions where all students and teachers feel the respect it when the Indiana law only allows us to negotiate salary, wages, and fringe benefits? The teachers of Hammond see it as our calling and our mission to teach, love, and protect our kids. What teachers want, our students need, and our Hammond families are with us. Unfortunately, we have challenges in Hammond that have gone unresolved for so long and have negatively impacted teaching and learning. Teachers face the challenge of teaching students without enough books. Why? Why aren't books in our classrooms the very first teacher workday? And and why aren't teachers allowed to have a copy of each of the students' consumable books to use as a model in their teaching? Teachers only want what students need. Teachers continue to spend money out of their own pockets on teaching materials and supplies in order to start the school year. Yes, some teachers were given an allotment of money to place in order this fall, but those supplies won't get to us until mid to late September. That's not when school starts. School starts in mid-August. That's when our supplies should be here. Supply money should be available in May so that the teaching materials and supplies will be here in August when our students need them. Teachers only want what students need. We have classrooms without certified teachers. Either because teachers have not been hired to fill those positions or subs are not available to teach the class. So classes are divided up, making class sizes too large. Teachers are not prepared to have an extra seven or eight or more students in their room. Or teachers are told to give up their planning time to cover colleagues' classes. Or students are housed someplace in the building. In any of these situations, a day of instruction is lost. Let me now quote from the article "Climate Culture Conditions and Compensation" by Randy Weingarten. "We must change how teachers and other school professionals are treated and supported. Schools need to be places where adults and children alike can thrive and grow, where there are relationships built on trust and respect, and where partnerships exist among students, educators, families, and communities. Only then will Hammond have schools where teachers want to teach, students want to learn, and parents want to send their children."
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Carlotta Blake King.
Good evening. It is wonderful to live in a country, this country, where freedom of speech is welcome, where unions are active, and where people can listen to each other. Negotiations should not be contentious. As a school board member, the Indiana School Board Association Code of Ethics, our number-one charge is children first. Children first. And we know in order for our, if we make children first, our teachers must be accommodated. I understand wellness of our teachers is an issue. Safety in the buildings is an issue. And receiving the right tools on time so that they can efficiently serve our students, children first. There must be a sense of urgency when it comes to educating our children. This notion that things have to be in a contentious matter and, and feelings in words such as "set up" or "kowtow" should not be in anybody's vocabulary when it comes to negotiating and speaking in terms of what's best for our children. When we talk about safety, I raise the question whether or not there was a coordinated effort between Civil City and School City, a plan that would make us all feel safe. I know Civil City Chief of Police has a program to offer to anyone who wants to take it. And as a member of the board member on the public library, we were encouraged to take this training and you, it makes you feel so safe. And I would encourage that both parties look into the program that Civil City Police Department has to offer in terms of safety. And finally, I cannot express enough children-first sense of urgency. We have to stop the flight of our teachers leaving Hammond. Yes, there is a national shortage, but in my opinion, we have literally ran many of our educators away from the city of Hammond. They must feel valued. They must feel valued. They must be given the tools. And it starts working together, the administration first, the union second. And as we come together, it should not once again be contentious, but we must work as a team. Children first, wellness for our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa Vanes.
Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Vanes and I teach kindergarten at Edison. And I love being a kindergarten teacher. I love the staff at Edison. I think I, I work with some of the best people. However, it is definitely time, I mean, it's overdue, that society respect and compensate us as college-educated professionals that we are. I'm going to give you an example of how poorly we are all paid. And I'm going to use myself as an example and I'm just going to put it out there. I bring home after taxes about $1,500. You divide that by 10 workdays, that's $150. You divide that by six and a half hours, that's $23 an hour. Then you divide that by the number of children, and I have 19 right now, and that turns out to be $1.21 per child. That's insulting. That's disrespectful. I deserve more. We deserve more. On top of that, I'm also being asked to read books from my administrators on my own time. I'm asked to do GCN trainings. I know that those are required, but you know what? If you want us to do those, then you should, we should have a teacher workday. I should not have to use my own private time at home to complete GCN trainings, to read professional books. It's, I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to do this for free. I mean, I'm doing it right now, but I don't like it. We should be compensated for that time. This doesn't, this also doesn't even include all the time that myself and the staff put in before and after hours at school. We're not compensated for that time. We're only compensated for six and a half hours. And when it boils down to it, I'm only making $1.21 per child. I'm only making $1.21 per child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Vargas.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Vargas, and I'm a proud K through twelve product of the school city of Hammond. I'm a dedicated teacher of eighteen years in this district. I am a third-generation homeowner in Hammond from my family. My sons are enrolled in the fabulous D L I program at Irving, which is attracting children from all over Lake County. I have a multi-faceted vested interest in the success of the school city of Hammond. I teach P E at Franklin Elementary, where I went to elementary school. I feel like the staff there is my family. Most of our staff has been in the district for a long time, which, as you can tell from what others have said, that's not the case everywhere. When I had a question last year about how to lower the basketball hoops in the gym, I reached out to my elementary P E teacher, and she shared with me how to lower them. This is an example of the type of relationships that I had with my teachers and pushed me into education. I hope these are the relationships that myself and my colleagues are creating with our students. In doing this, teachers need to feel safe and respected in order to do that. Please allow teachers the ability to use their knowledge, experience, and expertise to do what's best for our students. Please take this into consideration during negotiations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. Is it Alicia Madeka? Burns Hicks Elementary School? Anything close to that? Okay. Did I pronounce your name? The most important thing is that I pronounced your name correctly. All right. Ms. Moriarty, any other signatures? No. Okay, so that is... Ms. Vargas is our last speaker.
Okay, with that...
I'm sorry. Well, please come up. You're... Can we get your name for the record, please?
Good afternoon. My name is John McClure. I'm a special ed teacher at Morton High School. I apologize for my late arrival here, but at four o'clock, I was doing G C N. As well... As well as putting in some information for the fifty-two kids on my caseload. I'm a special education teacher. I came to Morton seven years ago on behalf of my brother-in-law, who worked there for thirty years. I live in Chicago. I have a family of educators. My sister spent thirty years teaching and wondered why I came here. I said, "I came to help my brother-in-law until he retired." He never did retire, and I've been here seven years. But my concern, and it's been articulated very eloquently by the people before me, we're here because of the kids that we serve. I look at it as a ministry in the special education department that I'm working in. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear that everyone has that same feeling about what we're doing. And I think it's sad that so many of the capable, bright, and dedicated people are either struggling to do what they want to do here or leave. Right now, we have a shortage just like everyone else. And I have three colleagues whose caseloads are humongous, too. I just happen to have the biggest, but I take no pride in trying to deal with fifty-two kids. I cannot service them adequately, and I... I stress over that all the time. None of us need to do that with all the other stresses that we have. So just want to let you know that we're people that are actually trying to do their job, and we need more assistance than what seems to be coming. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I think our speaker, we're at the end of the... If I could say a couple of things. Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here today, sharing your thoughts with us. Rest assured that I will carry back your comments to our bargaining team and try to put... Formulate or put together some sort of offer to the district that would, to some extent, compensate for some of the concerns that we heard here today. So again, thank you very much, Mr. Freel.
I also want to thank you for being here and for making your comments hurt. And I'm here on behalf of the school board. I know we have a couple of school board members here. We have a superintendent here. They are here, I'm sure, to hear what you guys had to say, and will convey those concerns to the entire school board. And I'm sure we'll be discussing some of those concerns at the negotiating table. Thank you for your time.